What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at the button versus hijack and cut off. Let's get started.
Forty bigs, are we adjusting or just random stack ups?
Uh, it's gonna be forty for now and later start uh deeper later.
I think this is high frequency call, low frequency three bet.
I agree.
Maybe like seventy-five percent call.
Yeah, I think it mixes a lot of the like eight, six, seven, eight, eight, nine, I thought it mixed all low frequencies.
Check this out. There's like a kind of uh kind of a shape. Man, it's kind of this. Then these two dead aces, we must just call. This is the spot where we're gonna treat that a little bit. But this one here too strong, just a call. And so that's small.
Well, I think we can bet small or size up.
Okay, so it's a pretty dynamic flop, so I will lean towards the larger bet when we bet likely, right?
Yeah. So because of the flush draw, yes?
And straight draws. Multiple straight draws that connect with both ranges, flush draw. Just um, it's just a dynamic type flop. I think. So like ace ten five, maybe bet smaller, more often.
So I thought like when we were calling in position, we don't really get to size up.
Typically uh versus late position versus late position, the float bets typically smaller, but again, I mean, the board's more dynamic, I think is when we start sizing up. And then also two broadways. Might be a thing too.
Okay, so we bet fifty, do we double barrel?
No, we check.
Uh, I would double barrel and try to buy river. I'm not sure if that's good logic, but there's still a lot of draws there we can get value from.
I think it's like a two straight thing, right?
Yeah.
We we can check or bet, but I think it's mostly a check.
I'd go like fifty-five percent, maybe. Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna go eighty-three with just ace nine.
Yeah. Uh, with two flush draws, it feels feels like you're leaving money on the table if you check.
It's just uh not a great ace.
Let's check back.
Now we definitely check.
Yeah.
This mixes, right?
Yeah, three betting is the time in game.
Yeah.
Oh, this is a board we have some giant sizes. This hand doesn't really wanna do it though, so I think just see bet small.
Yeah, I could get the honor check too.
Four?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's four or good.
We're checking.
And just check back.
We've got small again now, okay. Oh. So we think about our range. We're not gonna have many aces, pairs of aces, kings, queens, we're not gonna have many jacks, so like sets, I mean uh king ten is probably pretty high up in range.
Better to call ace ten than king ten.
I think we have to call more tens than just king ten.
I'm not folding much tens there.
Sorry, just to catch up, we uh we three bet, three, we bet small flop, check, check, turn. And then river he yeah.
I think I think this is gonna mix, actually. I think it's mostly a fold.
I'm just off his calling.
Again solver, yeah. Nice check, okay.
I I frequently threw by this too.
Yeah, I think it makes
It's more than a solver.
Yeah, I'm never fault, I'm never folding LP, so you can call.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, you don't fold much, yeah. Oh, he made it easy for us.
Now, now he made me fold.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we lost our stack last time we three bet it, let's try again.
It's supposed to be the hijack too. Not just a cutoff. Uh, let's do it again, right? Yeah.
For ourselves in tough spots. Uh, we could see bet, right?
Yeah. Twenty-five percent, that's it. Why so small?
Well. You could have looked at the range to get an idea why maybe.
Why so small?
Maybe just
A sideboard, we have a tennis bay, it's like we're, it's just hard for him to continue.
Yeah, and a king, we have a king as well, so that's what I was thinking, we block a lot of continue.
And it's dry as hell, there's, I mean, I guess there's the wheel draw, but like not very relevant, there's no Broadway draw.
So really no, no, uh, yeah, really likes a small bet with the range.
Ace low low.
Yeah, like you can look at some different boards, like maybe ace nine, eight, two tone might have some, uh, it might shift up to like from ten percent to the uh larger size, the twenty-five, whatever it is.
Sure, cuz on ace nine eight, lots of straight draws and
and then put two broadways on there maybe and
There's a lot of fair boards, monotone boards. That's all there is for now. Then ace low low. Ours has a flush draw. Fair and fair.
Ace low low. Ace mid low, there's our first ace mid low, that's not a wheel, ace six deuce. I guess also cuz these like six, seven, eight are not very relevant in the three bet pot, like neither player just has much of them.
So it's, is it always like ace deuce, ace deuce?
I mean, if you sort the other way, you can just scroll down to the ace low low to look at them.
Yeah, I've seen so far, I've seen ace six deuce, ace seven deuce, ace eight deuce. I don't think it's an accident, but there's not much ace nine deuce, you know, cuz like at that point, both players start having a lot more second pair.
Ace deuce.
So why are we checking ace five three? Like why are we starting to see checks come in?
Ace five three?
Yeah, like that's
I mean, it's not that he it's not that he has the the wheel, but there's like a lot more wheel draws, like a lot, both players can have one card gut shots.
So ace deuce and ace three, popular flaps. Ace deuce again. Ace deuce. Alright.
So now you're starting to see some larger bets come in, you got two broadways, ace queen two, or like uh, and it's, oh, these are, it's um
Let's look at the smaller size though.
Rolling so fast.
So flush draw.
And a little bit more of like some mid cards, like a lot of nine high, ten high, seven high, jack high.
Connected a little bit.
Yeah, and and just like nine high, like it's a little bit more dynamic, like any player with a ten or a jack, you know, can spike a top pair. Which can't happen on ace four deuce. Or ace seven deuce.
Yeah, and cut off defense middling cards, right? Like pretty wide with the suited aces, kings, queens.
Yeah, and like of jack, jack nine, queen nine, that kind of stuff, yeah.
But they're in there with nine, eight suited, right? Versus a button three bet.
Yeah, definitely.
It's like middle with a flush draw, right?
Yeah.
Man, a big bets?
Should get us more towards, yeah, straight draws, like ten, nine, king ten. But a lot of ten, nine, not so much ace high.
Yeah, then lot of
Well, ace with Broadway, like ace Broadway's got size up too.
Yeah, and king Broadway is one of the top ones up there. I felt like I was gonna expect to see more jack ten, but that's probably gonna show up in a yet larger size.
Yeah, it's funny, right? You'd expect like jack ten four, but no it's
But we've seen ten, nine, I think if we go up to the next size, we're gonna see even more jack ten. Jack nine. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of like mid straight draw stuff. And two broadways, like Ken said.
Then last but not least, big bets, oh, jack ten.
There's our jack ten.
The big, big bets.
Okay, and a lot of these ones have have two straight draws, like there's queen ten six, which has straight draws top and bottom, king ten eight, double, double straight draw, queen ten seven, double straight draw.
So ace do say three with that very small.
We barrel again, I think.
Yeah, we picked up a gutter.
That's pretty good.
Like, yeah, his low, anything below a jack is like not happy about a jack rolling off.
And we're gonna
Probably gonna bluff spades too, right?
Probably more like fifty?
Yeah.
Just small, we can shove the river, it's gonna be scary for your alpha, you don't have full liquidity.
We're not gonna shove river with this hand.
The spade ten?
If the spade comes. Or if like a nine comes, right? And then we're blocking.
Six, twenty-six, yeah, I mean, geez, maybe we do check, yeah, SPR, like I, I don't really, I'm not good, these like these SPRs, the three bed spots.
I'm torn between fifty, it's just fifty. Like I'm never betting small here, small is just bad.
I mean, I would, I would be okay with like making a B forty option, which would basically be geometric, but it's fine. And we got him off an eight.
You bet. Three bet or, three bet or call, either one's fine.
Ten percent?
Ten percent.
It hates, GTA wizard hates that bet size.
Well, it's like a three bit pot, right?
Yeah, I guess.
And it's not ace deuce. Leads the turn, interesting. Hmm, and we can't click him.
Well, we have ace jack, if any hand can raise ace jack, hang, we can, uh, the SPR is like, gonna, it's like, oh, it's already, it's less than a pot size.
Exactly.
I'm happy to put it in, honestly.
Yeah, I think like
I'm jamming a hundred percent of the time here.
Yeah, especially without the spade, like if you were gonna call any ace jack, you'd call with a spade. Um, vulnerable one type hands, like trips, I think can slow play more, but we often see these like fast played, vulnerable one pair hands. Pocket queens can make a decent jam. Yeah. Well, then we get the max value from his draws there as well.
I three bet this.
Is it still more of a call though? Does it not start picking up until just lower? I like, I can never remember exactly where it is.
Not true.
I think it's, I think it's king six, king seven.
Yeah, I was looking at one the other day that was king four at a certain arrangement stacked up.
I'll tell you what, since we gotta play it, so might as well three bet.
Yeah, hijack's open and what, king five suited, so we could probably do like king four, king five, king six suited, sub frequency. But I guess, I think king five is probably more common.
Yeah, king five or king seven.
Just a hair too good.
What's the, what's the bottom of his opening there? Is he, he's opening king five, right? King four. King four, okay.
Okay, Jay, so we call. Well, sound, sounds like a C bet small to me, these deuce.
Wait, not C bet though, we, we called, so we're floating.
Yeah. Pretty dry board, relatively.
Uh, I don't think, I don't think nothing.
You know, that's why not?
Say again?
I, whenever like in this scenario, you call in position, you're gonna see that small fifty percent of the time?
A little more, yeah.
It's not, it's not C betting, but yeah, it's
But I think we're betting large a lot here.
Are you?
It's, it's not a, it's not a dynamic board, so that's gonna drive or
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, yeah.
I think overall look at this, we check fifty percent. And then we really bet small.
Smallish, a little medium.
And then there's a little bit of sizing up, like forty-five percent.
Yeah, that'll be on like your two broadways again, and like dynamic connected type words.
So basically, it's fifty fifty here. So when you, you're on a fifty fifty spot, like I mean, if it's fifty fifty, you got equity here, you gotta bet all the spades, right? All the spades, no?
I mean, not all of them, if you're gonna call anything though.
How are you gonna bet fifty percent of your range if you don't bet?
You never bet, you never bet all your spades, like king, queen of spades?
That's what I was gonna say, king, queen of spades, probably very happy to check.
Yeah, or call, yeah, check. Yeah, yeah, so your, your best couple
You want him to have
Yep.
Worst space that can call, so like you don't wanna
Yeah, exactly.
There, you know? If you have king, queen, it kinda sucks, so.
If you're always betting your spades, whenever you check and a spade comes, you can't have a flush.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so how do you come up with half? Like, you gotta bet fifty percent here.
So your kings are the not flushes, so your worst ones unblock them from having a queen high flush.
Exactly.
Back high flush, ten high flush, whatever, like, so you wanna let them have some decent one card flushes that can continue.
And this is like, and yeah, this is so classic, like you bet your high lows a lot more. Also, like, we're not, we're not devastated if he folds like king, queen of clubs when we bet king, six of spades, like, that's great, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, cuz you're never, you're not guaranteed to get there, anything they, they fold, I'm happy every time.
So to meet the betting frequency, you gotta bet singles spades. Yeah, I bet a lot of your spades as well, like
Yeah, they got straight re, uh, backdoor straight draws to those broadways with single spades, right? They all got backdoor straight draws as well, so they're decent.
Okay. What else do you need to bet here? A name.
A decent number of sevens.
All your pairs. So like this, the sixes look like they might only have spades, but the rest of them don't seem to care much. Pocket sixes.
Are you guys betting eight, six here? Probably, right?
Actually, yeah, it's like three to a straight. Yeah, I mean, it seems okay, like he checks and I'm just like thinking he has, you know. You know, to pick a couple of hands, king, queen, king, jack, and I'm like how sticky is he gonna be, is he gonna be, like?
You could check ten to fold, with jack ten of clubs to fold there, it's pretty great, right?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
But I kind of, it's not the exact same, but for that float betting spot, I kind of think of it like C betting, cuz like Ken was saying, you know, it's not a dynamic board, it's like the bet sizing kinda works similarly, what you have an incentive to bet, it's kinda similar.
Got here a lot, might be a mistake, but I kinda wanna realize now. I don't wanna get
Oh, man, I don't know. Well, I wanna, I want him to fold everything but an ace, like say goodbye to pocket queens, say goodbye to king, queen, say goodbye to nine, eight, or eight, seven suited.
Probably better.
Like all that shit gone.
I wouldn't keep barreling worse spades, but like the king, high spade, I feel like I'm gonna check some.
It just sucks when you bet and get jammed on, but I think
Exactly.
With this hand, I'm guessing like forty percent of the time. Hundred.
Yeah, so like you got
A draw that struggle against a raise, so we can't bet it.
I mean, can't is a big word, like if we, yeah. Can we look at this range?
Like queen, jack, surprise, and then dog.
We're gonna polarize, we're gonna have, yeah. Some strong hands like ace ten, ace seven plus for value, ace jack.
Queen eight. Or spades.
Okay, so it's it's splitting some hairs around, like it being better to have something that blocks that straight draw with like king, eight, king, nine, queen, eight, queen, nine?
What is, is king five hearts or spades? Hearts.
I think the game we're setting up is that if we have like king, eight, king, nine. Then when a six or a jack rolls off, we're gonna bluff it.
So is king nine spades, is it betting any of the king high spades?
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit.
I think we're, they're getting set up to be the like future bluffs, cuz we're also betting a lot of nine, eight.
Yeah, and that kid it with the hearts, it really likes to continue with the backdoor more. When you have the king.
We've seen that before, uh you continue with the crappy front door flush draws and the good backdoor flush draws.
Yeah, cuz like if we have backdoor, I guess we're targeting what, the, them with their front doors?
Yeah. And like weak one pair hands and stuff like that. That's a very bad hand to hold here. So very bad, it's like all the wrong blockers.
He probably would have jammed turn if we bet.
Maybe, yeah.
What a three bet. Hmm.
Ah shit, here we go.
Bet large or check?
I'm checking.
Yeah, checking's okay, I think betting fifty is probably the size this hand would use.
Why do you wanna check here?
Uh, as this board drills his three bet call range, and I wanna get jammed on when I bet or raise with this hand.
Like name a hand, name a hand that he holds. Alright, but still range bet.
We're gonna check a lot on our range.
Well, let's look at the strat, strat says we check fifteen percent.
Surprised.
Across
Majority, but we close your eyes and bet small, that's what GTO does.
Close your eyes and bet small.
But you know what I real, I came to realize that it has to do with a stack that a lot more than anything else. Because if we do it at the hundred, it's never gonna bet range like that.
See, this is why I hate just to put chips, I feel like it's such a waste, cuz they're gonna call so much versus a small bet and like the turn. We're basically got a gutter, it's gonna be so hard to, you gotta like commit to bluff your stack off, it feels like.
Or hope that, you know, you dominate some of his draws, like you know, he has some king, jack, and ten here.
We can check back now.
He has ace ten, like we dominate that draw.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think we definitely check turn. Oh my god.
Yeah, see, you kinda, you gotta keep going, man.
Just close your eyes.
That's right, yeah, that's what I felt like, that's what the turn, that's what the flop bet or that texture feels like to me.
Okay, but we're bluffing with the best hand.
Mm-hmm.
So we saw this one, gonna need to call a lot.
Yeah, it's calls, right?
Or it, it picked up again, it was, it was bluff king five and then bluff king eight, nine again.
We're very heavy on suited eights and suited sevens.
Yeah, I think it was king, five, king, eight, king, nine, stuff. Okay.
Yeah, suited sevens, suited eights.
Oh, interesting, the one against the, the earlier position was like button versus hijack or lowjack, had like a two-part strategy, there was a gap between the two, three betting ranges, there was like king four and then there was like king eight. Anyway, it's not a huge detail.
Yeah.
Bet.
I guess so, it's our best seven.
Bet small?
Yeah. Yeah. Ten or twenty-five. Makes sense that we're seeing the twenty-five and not the ten, cuz this is a little dry.
You bet every seven.
I think it's basically a range bet.
Uh, no. Once the one would bet the least, right?
Well, king seven bets the most, it's cuz it's the best one we have.
I don't know.
Check.
Okay, well, yeah, we're gonna check back, second, third pair, actually.
We bet any nine X?
Yes. Definitely.
You guys are double barreling in nine?
I'm asking.
Sovere will.
Them are a savage. Nine X.
We have none.
So we don't bet nines on the flop?
Yeah, but think if you have a spade with it, how about that?
Yeah, but we don't have any nines left in range, so they don't bet the flop, I presume.
Yeah, let's go back.
Should be betting a lot, we just don't have
We're just really
Oh, we don't free bet the nine X, okay, alright.
Hmm.
Bold, we, we have, yeah, we have fourth pair, we don't block the straight, we don't block the flush.
We three bet, bet flop, took our shot. Bottom of range.
He has ace jack.
I'm out.
I say you gotta three bet here.
Versus hijack, it's probably reasonable.
I think it's more of a call, yeah.
More of a call, yeah. Well, okay, okay. We can trade that here.
When all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail.
I would go ten.
Me too, but I don't think GTA wizard is.
Twenty-five. It's more of the middling straight draw, flush draw, a little more.
Or it was doing it a little bit there, no?
I don't know, yeah, but I think this one, like, it has that straight draw.
It's, it's a paired nine, it's like
Exactly.
He still size up.
Louis, you know, you can um filter for only, yeah, exactly, only paired boards if you want. Um, it's the filter thing to the left a little bit, a little bit to the left, other left, nope.
Not this here.
Right.
Uh, I know it's due a different way, yeah, that's fine.
This works. Well, that's pretty cool, actually. Oh, look at this, pair board, so we got only the pair boards here, does the average change?
Uh, so what are the twenty-one percented by ten percent, honestly? That's mostly doing it with
Ah, there you go, you, you
So ace, ace, a lot of ace, ace.
Pair, you check four percent of the board. And then it's always gonna be, okay, so we can almost get rid of the one, cuz
Well, let's just see what the twenty-two percent of ten percent bets, which, which, it's only pairs, so let's see what
Look at, it's like, it's a lot of ace, ace, and it's a lot of highs and lows, and there's like ace, deuce, deuce, ace, five, five, ace, ace, three.
Or is it paired with an ace kind of thing?
And in high pairs, like I see queen, queen, three, no straight draw, queen, five, five, so like high card and low pair, or high pair and low card, no straight draw.
Now, we're almost betting range, so what bluffs wanna go bigger and like, and which ones wanna go smaller, maybe is a more important thing to know.
The one that are heavy on twenty-five percent?
Pretty mid cards, some of them have straight draws of some kind, jack seven's a straight draw, eight four is a straight draw, eight six is a straight draw.
Yeah.
Barrel.
Uh, yeah, a little bit, oh, go small, it's the SPR, I guess.
So it's like basically Geo, now all of it.
Three better call, which way you wanna play it?
Three bet. Just a smaller.
Really like to have a, well, hearts, wanna bet this, I, yeah, I think hearts and spades actually wanna bet the most. I don't know, man, I think we gotta bet, yeah, we gotta straight draw.
Yeah. The deuce is a pretty big brick. I would shoot here another one.
I think we gotta keep bluffing. Nope.
Okay.
I know we didn't pick up equity, but it's not always a thing in position, it's not really as big a concern.
Yeah.
We can fold. Call some with king, I. Call, 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 call.
Oh my goodness. That's small? One?
Yeah, you could toss out a tiny bet.
Thirty-three, I was gonna say, yeah. Uh, I think we have to call. Do we have?
Cuz he's, yeah, he's, we're, we're, we have a bluff catcher. We're beating his bluff, hands like eight, nine, bluffs here. It's, yeah. Definitely check back. Maybe, god, silver steps him. Alright, we're expecting to win most of the time now. Yep.
Nine spicy.
It's pretty spicy.
I get better king, gets him a size to fold, it's fine.
This one, well, I think about that last one. I like, again, I think about these as like button versus big bind in position C bets. If we C bet. Instead of float betting with ace eight on seven deuce deuce and big blind check raised us, we would definitely continue, right? In the same way. Yeah, we've never fold.
Oopsie.
Hit, yeah, let that one go. Call it off, maybe he's bluffing.
Nine, seven.
Yeah, maybe versus cough. I'm not sure against hijack.
Just a little shot.
In there.
We have a nine. We're gonna, we're gonna bet it, right? Ten, let's draw a middle card. We size up.
Yeah, but why? I don't really wanna.
Love with the nine, right?
And the nine with like no re-trial, like, like Jack nine can turn a top, you know, two pair or like a spades, give me something. Nice, that was pretty bad.
I would check back more often if I had a nine with an over to the ten. I think I wanna bet this one more than like. Nine than queen nine, I think. I wanna bet this one more, I think.
Danny, I guess, but. You're never getting a better hand to fold, so all you're getting is protection. It's like you're just hoping that you can get him off of some like ace high, king high. But like there, you're ahead of them. Oh, god.
Look at the range. See what like queen nine does. I'm curious, like to me.
You might be right. Okay, so the range is lit up.
Yeah, it's just range bet.
Yeah, we found the combo that checks the most. Oh, my. Five, four.
I mean. I mean, let me show you this right away. See this?
It was ten percent.
So, yeah, alright. Good.
Same maybe.
I mean, yeah, the worst second pair we have does seem like a candidate for checking.
I would check here.
Yeah.
Yeah. We river a shitty straight.
So.
Think we, no, whoa, Louis, what are you doing? You'd be overbetting to try and get called by what? It's a four straight.
It's one.
You lost. Okay, I wanna say, like, going so fast, you lost eighty big blinds per hundred there. Eighty big blinds per hundred.
Is it not pot size? What is gonna call your fourteen? That isn't calling my jam.
Two pairs.
Pair jacks.
Yeah. I mean, when the EV difference is that big, I think we gotta maybe respect the solver here. We're not splitting hairs. This one's. It's worth learning.
Oh.
Fair enough.
It's funny how Louis picks and chooses the times that he wants to obey what. What the output is.
We're losing, we're losing eighty big blinds per hundred and we're like, whatever.
Well, SPR was one.
Meanwhile, same EV checking some. Danny, look at this.
I mean, you gotta bet eighty percent of the time, eighty-five percent.
I will, but I didn't wanna bet that hand.
Like this mixes.
Yeah, right?
Three bet?
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, god.
Papa.
I don't know. They got ace queen in range still, so uh like.
So do we, baby.
I honestly, I honestly wanna just bail out.
He's.
Oh, no, we're not.
He doesn't have a screen. He's for betting.
Let's. I kinda like fifty. Is that crazy?
Yeah, I gave up. I'm out.
It's, it's one of them.
Yeah.
Giving up here is terrible.
What do you think the machine is gonna say? Do you think it gives up? Like you know the answer.
I do. I mean, this combo might have, like, there's some checks, right? Like, there's your small amount, but there's checks and I just feel like this hand, I'm done with it.
You guys are driving me crazy.
Yeah, now I'm, now I'm mad too.
Alright, so we.
Just make them fold sevens, bet four and make them fold sevens.
Give me, give me like king, give me like king, jack, five. Give me something to bet.
Ken, you know you're supposed to bet.
We have a gutter.
Dude, I don't know how to continue after this street, so uh to me it's a spew. If I bet this, I'm spewing cuz I don't have no idea what to do.
Well, let's, let's learn it, let's learn. Hang on, you know, I'm out there in the streets doing that every time, right?
Yes.
Eighty percent of the time, we don't see a turn.
I don't believe that.
I think that the flop bet prints, even if you don't know how to continue turn.
Yeah, cuz like if he has like, you know, he has ten, nine, how would say there's ten, nine to like click in the call here?
Twenty-five percent cut.
The key here, Ken, is you don't need to double barrel.
Pocket sevens or pocket sevens gonna call like?
Sevens with a spade is calling.
Supposed to.
No shot.
Seven with a.
Sevens on this board?
Well, it's a spade.
Free bet pot though, I think.
Dude, no shot, no shot, sevens calls.
Maybe that's a bit ambitious. But we're range betting, right? And it's small.
Five percent. Free bet pot, they go away. The single raise pot, yeah.
It's too bad of a board for like three overs that. It's like.
We still gotta bet here majority of the time.
You got a better hand to fold. Or we're starting to fold.
It's also a fine result cuz then we don't get bluffed.
Yeah.
Alright, what about now?
Do we go half pot or just small?
How?
I don't know.
Go small.
Oh, I want to go small. Oh, look at this. How happy are you?
I'm, I'm excited now. I love me some good pot control.
Yeah, this hand doesn't, this hand, I guess, really, really, really doesn't wanna get raised.
I think we go a quarter pot again. Well. Yeah, it's gotta be, right?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Maybe we check some as well.
Fifty.
No. Really?
Wow, why not?
Okay, fifty with a lot of checking?
Fifty with no checking at all.
I mean, our range, our range. There's a lot of checking.
King is great for a three bet pot. We double barrel it up on it, no? Ah, fifty, fifty. Yeah, means.
Cuz if we have an ace, it's kinda like. One of the worst cards to see.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, yeah.
So I thought we might just continue small, but I guess uh we size up our check. That makes sense too. Oh.
In real life, what do you do?
I'm always folding in game.
Real life, yeah.
Yeah, how can they not have it?
I mean, you're calling for a chop in real life, i- i- at best.
I think in real life, the chop you're talking about is gonna check back. It's not putting it in. Alright, let's three bet. Oh.
Not fold.
He got us.
Oh.
Mixes, right?
Yeah. Three bet.
Twenty-five percent pot, I guess.
Yee-haw.
Six percent check, god damn it. Check.
I'm gonna check here.
Yes, I do.
On a four liner. I don't blame you this time. We value. Like he's not checking a full house twice. He's not checking a straight twice at this.
Way loose to any king.
I'm happy to just show it down, honestly.
Alright, yeah. We got, we got fucked.
Alright. Three bet.
My five percent.
Okay.
It's a bad board.
Yeah, no.
And it's disconnected.
Go.
So this isn't good enough to stick it in with, I don't think, so just call.
It might be.
Do you stick it in with ace ten?
Yes, I do.
I wouldn't. I would just call both.
Yeah, I guess we call here.
I think ace ten is pretty good to get in with.
Aha.
Ace ten.
Ten, king ten, queen ten a little less. Yeah, and then it starts getting, oh, ten eight.
And then like. And then like on the other side, jacks and queens. But not so much kings, naces.
So what's going on with the ten eight and ten nine suited? Why are they putting it in?
They're more afraid of his pair draw.
Think having a jack here is bad?
Yeah, he does have, like, his bluffs do have jacks. He has like jack nine, queen jack, stuff like that.
King jack.
Yep.
Maybe.
Yeah, it's not jack nine, but yes. No, not queen jack. Where is bluffs? King jack.
He's jack, king, jack, jack ten, so the.
But it's not a blow.
So here we go. Now we stick it in.
Yeah, we saw ten, nine, and ten eight stuffed it. It was the jack ten that did, and it was like an outlier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know why. I still, we looked at it. I still don't understand why.
Yeah, because the jack was bad. He blocks the bluffs. Alright, jack ten is bluffing, king jack is bluffing, as jack is bluffing.
What's our range doing?
We're clicking it every time unless we have a jack or a seven in our hand.
Okay.
And we three bet.
Yeah.
Ooh. Ooh.
Either way.
Yeah.
Can we call without a club here?
Yeah, I'm not. I I call the spades, diamonds, and hearts. I'm just, I'm just gonna give this up. It might call, but whatever.
I was curious whether or not we would be raising cuz we have the upper dangler, but.
Raising might be better than calling, honestly, in real life.
Seems pretty.
Against that hand.
He's trying to milk us.
Go for a little three bet. Well, well. What a great opportunity.
Maybe now we um. Bet half.
We go ten percent.
Why ten percent? And why half?
Why ten percent? Cuz I don't wanna lose any chips.
Okay, that's bad. Why half?
It's completed equity, so I don't think we go half pot. It's gonna be a small better check, I think, and I, we hardly ever check, so I'm guessing small bet, and I'm just going ten percent.
Tim says half because it's good and that.
He didn't ask you though, Ken.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
No.
You lost two and a half more time chips than I would've.
Alright, let's three bet.
Looks like a good C bet. Hmm.
Alright, you gotta call.
SPR is so low that we have to call.
Yeah.
I don't think so. I'm out.
Cool.
You got a spade and two over cards.
Yeah, do you see you're losing money to call? It's a backdoor draw, it's a low SPR. You have two overs. The only thing, you got some backdoors, you got a couple overs, but it's gonna be hard to realize, so.
What do you mean hard to realize? We're in position.
Because the chips go in now.
Look at this, ace of hearts.
Oh, man. Still like a good bluffing candidate.
He checked?
He checked. We put it in. Queen of hearts.
Uh.
No, cuz we don't have actually.
Bet small.
No. I want like a real draw. I want, cuz we we block hearts and spades, but I wanna actually have a way to win.
I'm with Louis. We, we, we're here. Let's go for it.
I'm not slow for me.
Listen.
Like, we gotta bluff some card, right?
It's the queen of hearts. We developed that backdoor here. We could revert to the the spade as well. Alright. And then we'll have amazing blockers.
I was gonna say, cuz we river the spade and then we still have. We river the spade, we still lose the ace time.
Don't think about.
Oh, there it is.
It was an excellent, I think, that works fine.
He just gave us the rope to hang ourselves with. He check raised and then he hit the ace and he let us bluff it.
It's like, yeah, the ace, I'm good. Let's go to the river. That's small?
Yes, king, jack, ace, jack.
Put it in?
Uh, no, you know what? The board isn't that scary, so he doesn't have a lot of draws to call off with when we jam. I I just call here.
I'm personally, my strategy is always to call here, cuz we're in position, blah, 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 but we see there a couple of sims there that are putting it in.
But on different textures, like this texture is like, this is like a set ace, jack, king, jack. It's still stuffing it, but with the EV, it's the same. Like this texture, I don't feel like he has as many draws that can call off when we jam. Yeah, it's just, we're just crushed.
No, we, we got him. Three bet. Oh. Oh. Three bet. Alright. I don't know. I just wanna press twenty-five percent.
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, I'm gonna sit here.
Hmm, this might go, jack, seven, might have some fifties, but yeah, twenty-five is probably most of it, most of it. Rather have the ace space now.
Give it up.
Keep bluffing.
Deuce.
Yeah, I'm gonna check. Yeah, he's high. It's like, whatever. I mean, he doesn't have ace, king, ace, queen, so we can value that, right?
All of, all the cookies are fourteen.
In this instance, I kinda like all in.
It seems like a little bit too much. We lose some value. The, cuz turn went check, check, river, change the.
So, does he have to call a jack if we jam? I, he might, right?
I think he might, right?
I don't hate jam. It's not like a huge over bet.
I said that last time and you guys crucified me.
Yeah, but this is different. Every hand's different.
It's a pair board.
It's like ace ten beats us, right? He might have some ace, queen. I don't know. He doesn't have ace, king. I guess half pot.
Yes. We can go ten here.
I would go, yeah, if you're twenty-five. I mean, it just does it. GTA Wizard's always gone twenty-five, it seems like.
Yeah, I would say like twenty-five should be my standard and like ten is an exceptional bet size, not the reverse.
I think ten's just to exploit most, most of the way.
So this is majority call, right?
Uh, the, the six is the one that raises.
Ah.
That's the outlier.
Wow. What do you wanna do here, Ken? Yeah, wonderful hand.
Hmm, versus cutoff, I would go bigger. I think we might still be able to go twenty-five percent versus hijack.
Hmm, we can check back and left here. Easy call. Right?
Is it? I'm out.
We got outs to win.
We gotta gutter backdoor flush. We gotta gutter backdoor flushing one over. I'm out. Ugh.
I mean, you're not going all in.
Holding.
Now we can fold. Well, he did that with queen nine.
Mix.
Three bet. Oh. Rebet.
I was gonna say, let's play some of these as a call, somebody, because they're mixed frequencies.
What do we do here on this flop, Ken?
Are you gonna bet every flop just about, so?
Yeehaw. We have that every time.
Fifty percent check.
Fifty percent check. I'm happy I made a check there.
You broke me down and like the last two flops that I decided just to C bet were like fifty fifty.
Look at this, you fools.
It's jack. We don't get value from worse ace high anymore.
But I got you guys because in the second hour, we're gonna be checking a lot, I think. I don't know yet, but I think it's gonna be a lot.
Ah, too bad. I have to go at eleven.
Breaks my heart then. Well, tell you what, let's start right away.
And we're mediocre.
The check line is interesting because you have to, you have to figure out how to float that, which I think is really interesting.
We were mediocre and we changed a lot of answers, not a very good session.
Hey, great. Let's do the same thing now and let's see how things change when we are a hundred big blinds.
Rebet.
Okay.
This is like a pure three. Oh, okay.
Nothing's pure at a hundred.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Maybe aces.
So now we're so deep that we have to start to think about actual strategy, right?
We're still gonna be twenty five, I think.
You think?
No.
I do. He just has so much junk in range that we.
Eight fifty.
So one thing I think I, I grab is that whenever you're deeper, you check a lot more. And you're building your checking strategy and your betting strategy based on the suit. Now here, we don't have any spade, we don't have hearts. It's an A side board. It's a great board for us. We're at the bottom of the range. Ah, stuff, right?
So yes, some of those things cut different ways. You're right that we do want the suits who are a hundred effective. That's definitely true, but you're also right that we're basically bottom of range.
We're gonna give one shot, right? One of fifty. Because of the.
See, but that's also where I think like, if if any bluff makes sense is twenty five, this is a good bet for twenty five because it's easy, like we can get ten high to fold, we can get some queen highs to fold, we can even get some queen highs to fold.
Yeah, but Tim, there's two high card and a fluster.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean every hand. That means, doesn't mean we exclusively bet fifty.
We're also very deep.
Sure. We don't have, we're not, you know, not every hand has to be trying to get a hundred big blinds.
Yeah, I imagine a range splits it up, so yeah.
It's fine.
Everything, bit of everything.
But yeah, these like, you know.
Oh.
When, when every plausible hand that he folds, we, you know, really benefit from. It's like easy to fit in a small bet, you know, because like we don't need to get jacks to fold. We don't need to get, you know, like Broadway draws to fold. I don't really want to barrel this hand.
I'm done with this hand. The king is great, no?
Yeah, but like, I want to polarize more on this turn and this hand is absolute trash.
We're gonna barrel. If we have nine eight of hearts, we're gonna barrel, right?
Yeah, nine eight of hearts is great. Some queen X, some ten X. Yeah, some spades.
Are we really giving up here? I feel like the king is great for us, no?
It is great for us, but we're not gonna bluff every hand in range and like I think this is a good give up. I think this hand is just trash.
Okay, I would bet here.
You might be right. You're right.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
The king is too good, right?
Is this, can we, can we look at the ranges? It's like a hundred percent turns you bet.
This is why it's dicey three betting some of these.
So honestly.
Not a hundred percent, but eighty five percent, yeah.
King is like.
And we're mainly going fifty and the hands that we check are mainly like weak kings, weak aces.
And I'm guessing. There's no other good turns like that. Hold the queen. The queen is equally good.
Apparently.
Queen, it makes.
All those seventy five percents, the, the, there's a lot of good cards.
Yeah, Lou, you, Lou, you're talking about frequency, not size.
Yeah, 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 frequency.
Oh.
Like we bet range on a king or a queen, is what I'm trying to say.
And on those low bricky cards, we hyperpolarize.
Yeah. But it's also probably value driven, right? We're not here with nine eight very often. Or are we?
You gotta punt a hundred bits. I'm not. No spade in my hand.
Louis is gonna do this and then he's gonna post in the discord.
I am so done.
Ah.
Very plus ball, thirty six percent of our stack. I mean, come on.
You're pretty quick at counting losses. Wish you were as quick as ranged betting when you three bet.
Dude, I'm interested in these spots because this is like dicey. If we're betting so many of these polarized portions of our range, we really need to get better post flop to how to play them like. So if it jams here, I'm gonna be shocked and I'm gonna be like, it's so much more. I mean, I know I don't know a lot, so you know. I'm actually contemplating on three betting a bit less polarized until I get better in the, with these ends.
Yeah, but you, you, that's because you have post flood belief that you think like people are gonna call your C bet too much. That they're gonna play better than you post.
So we haven't node locked the, we haven't node locked any of this. So like, we don't really know exactly what the best adjustments are versus player types in three bet pots because we haven't studied it.
We need some bluffs.
Well, like suppose you're against a player that never folds a jack here. You can't, you don't want to bluff this, eh?
Yeah, definitely. If you never fold a jack, you're gonna go absolutely batshit crazy with your value and you're gonna have, the more value you have, the more bluffs you have.
No, you just don't bluff. You don't bluff people that called, like suppose, I don't know.
You never fold a jack and then you're going in.
Suppose jack is a pure fold and I'm not saying it is. Let's suppose jack is a pure fold and they call it every time. You were supposed to have zero bluffs.
Yeah.
Zero bluffs. If they bluff. What was it? Oh, and there was another one, I think.
If they're not folding a jack by the river, I'm not betting flop even here.
Yeah, it's like, I don't know if they're supposed to defend jack, but if they aren't ever supposed to defend a jack on the river, you were supposed to have zero bluffs.
I like it. I gotta run.
Take care, man.
Answer.
And I think, I think it was Justin. It was one of the coaches, Justin or Romero or someone that said, if people are under bluffing by three percent on the river, you have zero bluff catchers.
Hmm. Now, do you put it in here or no?
No.
So mainly give up. I was thinking about this. I mean, I still.
This guy.
Straits are still important. I would love to be, we will sometimes be bluffing with a low, um, a low pair, like or not a low pair, but like a, a, a set blocker, like a three X. Um, I kind of like having a three X there because it's a, because it's a boat blocker. I also saw we did barrel some jacks on the turn. I kind of like bluffing those because they're also boat blockers. And yeah, having a single spade on that last one, ugh.
We should look at the range. We're going through them too fast. Like these are spots when we were drilling, but we're not really digging into it and we gotta learn some heuristics somehow.
I think one of the big ones I already took away from that one is that turn C bet is very high frequency on the third Broadway, which kind of makes sense and I think it's the same on imposition hands.
So in my mind, I was gonna bluff this, all of this portion for sure. Not many pairs, but all of this that missed, that bet flop.
Wait, but a lot of those are spades. Can we exclude spades?
You want spades out?
Yeah, because like obviously spades are a good hand here, so.
Uh, so you're over bluffing, okay. Uh, there were, yeah, there were.
Well, this is, it's just not part of the deck, right? You're at the bottom. You don't have anything because the rest of your range. Has a little something, a pair of king, a pair of ace.
Your bases, yeah.
A little something, you know, but this portion has to go forever in my mind.
Interesting, queen ten, the, the, the straight is not good enough to value bet a hundred percent of the time here.
So seven, six, is that just hearts? What, what is it?
It's all suits, Ken.
Livers of everything.
Even spades, it's all suits, full frequency. You bet that turn, you make it here, you're just going. What do we accomplish when we do that?
Clear the filter.
Jacks are folding.
Clear the filter. So seven, six is all of them. Eight, seven is some of them. What's? So diamonds and clubs check back half the time. This shit's complicated, man.
Yes, it's really complicated. And then, yeah, Lou, you were gonna look at his reaction to our bet, so we, we jam.
I'm wondering if we get a king fold. A pair of jack is folding. We get all the jacks to fold.
Okay, so all the jacks fold. Now, uh, kings are falling a lot. If he's calling kings.
Kings are majority calls, yeah.
Actually, basically, I'm calling.
King jack, king queen, king queen off, king jack off.
I think we're getting more folds than that in real life. Like, I'm not expecting to get looked up here by king ten very often.
He's folding some aces. You guys noticed?
Yeah, so, so if they aren't folding aces, you can never bluff. If they're not folding aces and kings, you definitely can't bluff. Like, you just can't bluff into those ranges, those people.
That's why I don't know. I just think this is, I think this is kind of weird because like he's calling king, but he's folding ace. Seems very weird.
Like, is it trip aces?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, who, who, how many people are we playing against that are gonna fold trip aces? There's gonna be some people finding some folds.
I don't think so.
There's gonna be some. But a lot are gonna call and then bluffing into those people is a disaster. It's my main point. Like, we gotta think about. What we're running into as well.
Uh, this is a good three bet. Yeah, it's like fifty percent. Okay, thirty percent. Oh, well, here we go.
Seems to be a good flop.
I think fifty.
So do we bluff gutters more or up and down more?
Well.
Not even really. I wouldn't even call this one at a hundred bigs. I wouldn't even call your flopping bluffing.
We bet small here or big?
I think they both have merit. Yeah, Slaver agrees. This might be the point where I would do.
He's raising some. Is, is he raising his best hands?
I think so.
Definitely. He's pretty capped, you know, on this card.
Yeah, I wanna barrel.
The only thing though is I feel like I'm not so excited about barreling turn because we can get blown off of it. Um, something like, something with a gutter. I would be, be happier about folding. But we can also get him to fold a lot. He's quite capped. We do have tens and overpairs in our range.
I mean, not all our outs are clean, so I mean, if I have to fold, I wouldn't care as much.
We're going mucho grande. Eighty percent pa.
Yeah, fold.
Wonderful.
He just had it. What's the worst queen we V pip?
This one.
Yes, not, no, do we? What?
A hundred, is it too bad? At a hundred?
Dear God. I'm not out here V pipping queen five. I'm like queen seven to V pip at the bare minimum. Oh, my God. I'm such a fish. It's mixing. That means that this is gonna get in there.
Six is in there, right? There we go.
Yeah, we, we find some bluffs with the suit of queens, but I'm not sure which ones.
This one.
Yeah.
The fact that queen five was mostly folding tells me that this one needs to be mostly raising, right?
Well, it's a later position open to, uh, qualify jack and. Or how you got cut off now, I should say.
Feels like a twenty five.
This where we find it then?
I don't think so.
No, air day was more like, yeah, but ten was more like ace, ace deuce. This is ace, ace jack. This is a straight draw. He can have a second pair more often. There's more, there's a lot more going on here than ace.
We have an ace, we really want to build a pot, right?
Yep.
Uh, you could free bet this, I think. Mixes.
This is like the worst one though, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's slivers down the line to like ace five maybe because they just don't, so barely as a call and they got blockers decent.
Right. What's the worst one that we V pip a hundred percent? Ace nine or ace ten?
I would say, I would guess ace nine.
Yeah, seems about right.
Ace. Ten?
It's a V pet, not three bet.
Yep, so yeah, Ken's right. Ace nine, we V pip a hundred.
Oh, and we don't, I, it's, I thought there'd be like slivers at three bets with like the ace seven, ace six, ace five toeing or not.
Yeah, I would have thought that too.
Oopsie.
Easy fold, but that's good. They have a better ace here. Uh, he fluffed us, but whatever. When they have a better ace, I don't mind getting out like that.
And we trade that. Is it too ambitious?
Nah, I would fold this honestly. Ugh. Like I'm king five.
Hmm.
Bet.
Small?
Sure. If it was queen, ten, six, maybe we go bigger, but I think this one we can just keep it at twenty five percent.
It's rainbow, but there's two high cards, right? And size up. Because there's two high cards.
If you make the five a six and see if it shifts even more to the larger size, because then there's multiple straight draws. So I think about it. I don't know if it's always right.
Doesn't matter. You see a difference here?
Um, it was, no, I didn't notice what it was before. Honestly, it looks like it might shift into smaller sizes.
Same thing.
It looks different to me.
Same, same, same.
Uh, yeah, so you do shift up like, uh, the twenty, you go up to fifty percent, about what, fifty percent more? Uh, yeah, six percent more. How about the seventy five percent? Does that get in there a bit more? Yeah, so yeah, a little bit more. It's not a big deal. So ace four would probably check more than a king four.
I think both are blasting.
You think ace four, uh, uh?
We're playing spades there.
Yeah, I know, but the aces, yeah, I guess ace four, what was it on blocks? Yeah, okay.
Last thing with the spades.
And let's look at the aces. I think they are. The better aces, I imagine, are checking in the worst ones bet.
No. Back doors, you mean?
Spades, I think the best spades probably check. Or is it, or maybe they bet because they have straight redrawals as well.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's the ones in the middle that check the most.
But ace four.
Yeah, the worst ones love it. And then the other ones have straight redrawals. The ace, king, ace, jack. The ace king, ace jack, ace nine. They say it's a pair, so yeah, okay. I fold.
Well, we just saw this.
Eight big blind more than me. So here, how often are we supposed to check on?
Don't know.
When we're deep like that.
It's like the same as forty. Like, exactly the same.
Exactly the same, interesting.
Is that eighteen? I think we had sixteen percent checks at forty, sixteen and a half, I think it was, right?
Yeah, oh, very close to that. Difference is, we use the big size.
Yeah, because we're deeper.
But we're still betting most of the time. I wonder if all the nets that are not here today know that.
So why are you checking?
I ain't checking, Ken, you know me.
Well, you had it clicker over the check button.
You know me, I'm the, I'm the school bet, I need to close your eyes and bet. And deal with what's coming.
We unblock spades, I'm folding, I don't care.
But. Sometimes, Ken, you have to tell yourself that. For now, you just have a five, but.
That what I tell myself here, I'm playing with a hundred big blinds to deep in a soft fucking tournament, I ain't putting in. My stack with ace five.
Okay, but look at the price, you, it's twelve big blinds into a pot that'll be sixty.
I'm not asking you to put your stack, Ken, I'm just asking.
You win on ace, you win on five.
All I'm asking for here is like twelve big blinds to see if we can scam with an ace.
Can, I mean, and listen, I realize we're probably good here, right, a, a decent amount, I understand that. But it ain't gonna be good on a lot of turns, so I'm out.
Yeah, but he might give up. You, you know?
Yeah, he might.
He might just keep up, not get his spade and give up.
I just know what I'm up against when I get check raised this deep in a fucking game like, I just don't bluff, so, I'm out.
You're losing about four thousand big blind per hundred by folding here. Just saying. See, he gives up.
You're supposed to bet thirty percent of the time, and you didn't.
Yeah, because my line is just like, we don't need to do that.
Well, you know, but you should do it sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, but we're just gonna win, look at this. No, it's not, uh, he's just putting us to the test, we say, yeah, we really have something. And then we move on to the turn, on the turn, we're still in position, we still have eighty big blinds to play. And then he can just give up, and it's cute when they give up, no?
It's great, it's a great feeling.
Fifty.
Uh, why so big?
Because you are deep, you hit your hand. Do you think it's gonna be good by the river? Good chances that aren't, probably not, given our kicker, and we're very deep to play for one pair. So it's more gonna like, we need to like, uh, bet big ones for value, for protection. And then, I don't think I'm gonna bet again, or maybe one other street if the runout is clean.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, because I mean, it feels bad to go three streets with this type of hand if it.
You can check turn and then call it, call his river, you know? If it's clean.
I max.
I mix as well, I mix, as in, I'm always trading that thing. Wanna size up as well here, because we're very deep.
Completed equity, do we go to size up?
Maybe not, but.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, because of the completed.
Call.
The party.
DG.
He has, what? Nine ten?
King queen, nine ten. Three bet.
So.
That's small. Well, still going big, or, really likes head pot.
Yeah.
Head pots count like a small C bet this deep, right?
Yeah.
Kinda.
Well, 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 we gotta bet small.
Head pot. Get better east side of fold, I imagine now. I mean, you're not gonna get ace ten to fold, or ace jack, but maybe you had ace queen, ace king to start folding.
I think it's a give up, maybe I'm wrong.
King queen unfold, I mean, we're ahead of that, but, yeah, I mean, you might as well just blast, take one more shot and give up.
It's a break. It, I think it's a bad one to bet on.
How many nines we three betting?
I think like ace, five, ace four, ace three, ace twos in our range, they wanna double barrel a lot. They, they benefit from double barreling, so maybe we bet again. I think it's a very dangerous turn. I think it's too bad, we're gonna check. I wouldn't be surprised if the wheels continue. But this is just too, yeah. Yeah. Think he has a ten. Wanna put him to the test?
No.
Okay.
It can, that's hilarious. Also, because like, it's a four liner, six, seven, eight, nine, nine, I mean, what, like, what are we doing? I think we can bluff some one pair hands to block boats.
He was not gonna call.
What's your four bet range? Oh, what's your four bet range?
Ace queen, ace five, ace four.
Suited?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna. And like, are you four betting queens? But even queens doesn't mean they're four bet, I mean, they just, it's really like kings and ace king.
This is the four bet, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought that was the five bet, that's five bet.
It's queen, it's five, it's four, I have at least three.
Jacks and tens don't need to four bet all the time.
It's worth noting, eight, seven, three bets as much as ace three and ace four practically, um. Ten nine is in there as much as, uh, against five, a six.
Yeah, I gotta find some ten nines. I find some four bets with king queen.
So like, do you, I don't even call king queen off, like, I, I could find a four bet with it, but I don't really. Oh wait, we're in position deep, yeah, I guess I will call a decent amount.
We're out of position.
We're button, right? Yeah, we're gonna be in position post flop, so king queen makes some sense, but, I mean, folding is fine, too.
We should be the button, the button, but this is the hijack strategy.
Uh, what's our calling range, or what's our four bet range?
There are five bet range, you mean?
I bet, yeah.
That, that's where I was mixed up.
That's what I meant, is look at, yeah.
Yeah, five bet range. Oh, not really bluffing, ace kings are bluff this way.
Yeah. I call, honestly.
And not three betting.
Not after a call.
Majority three bet. Is he leaving in a three bet pot?
Cause he has all the sets we don't have, I guess. So he gets to do it, because we don't have three sixes or sevens in range, and he does. Look at that, he flopped and joint.
Want a three bet?
I do not, I mean, I might have sliver, but I just call.
It's the rule of eight, Ken, you have two eights, you three bet to eight point eight.
I realize you have to mix them in in some frequency, but I'm pretty comfortable calling, playing post flop in position.
Gotta see that here.
Yeah, I guess.
Uh, we're checking. I'm, tell you what, he doesn't have many kings. Our, if he doesn't have kings, our hand can get value and protection.
No, dude.
Two ten?
I don't know.
He still has some kings?
I have no strong opinions on this spot at all.
So, you don't wanna see that here?
Like, I mean, in this whole drill, I have no strong opinions about anything.
Which is pretty rare.
I don't know.
Right, so. I guess checking is probably the best option.
Check.
Yeah.
Free bet? I'm folding, dude.
They're folding. Well, that's great. That's three bet.
Seems like a rainy, just bet, I guess, small, twenty-five percent. Would it go fifty, twenty-five, I think, at this end?
Hey Nick, pop quiz.
Alright.
So at forty big blinds, cut off versus button and three bet pots, the button bets eighty percent, eighty-five percent of the time. Right?
Where's the quiz part?
What do you think? How do you think, uh, the, the frequencies change at a hundred big ones?
Uh, we're gonna be c betting, like, the c bet percentage is gonna be like fifty percent.
Instead of eighty-five, you think it's gonna be fifty, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that low, as low as fifty?
That's what I thought as well, Nick.
Maybe like, maybe like fifty-five, sixty, somewhere in there.
I think it's more like sixty.
Yeah, that's what I thought as well.
Or more, I mean, a hair more, maybe.
Yeah, you know what the, the machine says? Look at the machine.
Two, two percent different.
So this one is versus the hijack, right? But it's still betting more than eighty percent of the time.
Okay, I feel better.
Even at a hundred big blinds deep.
And like, I wanna point out, it's not just the ten percent sizing, there's some sims where it's like, okay, sure, but it's all ten percent, that's kind of a check anyway, but. That's still only seven percent, most of it's really thirty, twenty-five and fifty.
So that's a big takeaway from, from this here today, is that I thought you would check a lot more here, where in reality, you're. Checking like five percent more. Let's three bet queen six.
Did you say in a three bet pot?
Yes.
Oh, but you, okay. My brain registered when you flat. And a three bet. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Deep stack like this.
Yeah, I think you're spot on, when check two, when you flat, I think fifty percent is, is.
Fifty, that's right. So we see that. Treat that. In six, then that's. Twenty-five percent. Ace, ace is great. Is it? Is it like a king or a queen?
I think we can bet small here pretty frequently. I think we'll have some small bets and some polarizing bets, but I don't think we're checking very often.
We're pretty deep, I don't think we use small a lot, I think it's like fifty or eighty.
I think on the ace, we'll have small bets, because it's such a good card for our range.
Good for the caller as well, no? The best for his calls. Or at least, like, it improves a lot of his calling range, maybe not on a jack, jack, four board, but. I say. Ah, we have a draw that's draw goal against the, or raise. We check, we realize equity.
I don't like check.
If we pick up an ace, when we have like ace five, we check here.
I think we're too deep, uh, we're deep enough to where we can call a check raise with this hand. We don't really struggle against a check raise.
Where do you wanna call to?
Yeah. Uh, how much are we betting small with range?
On the flop?
On the turn, on the ace. I'm gonna guess it's like fifteen, twenty percent of the time we're betting small. And rarely checking.
Never betting small?
Yeah, twelve, I said fifteen.
Majority like a big fapple. Or checked. That's three bet.
You can call or three bet, mostly call.
Oh, my God. Think we need to call?
Um. Never folding, do we ever jam as a bluff?
No. Have you seen it? We've seen it. Say it's king, you're bluff here.
Ace five suited.
No, it's five. It's a five, that's five. We're not really, it's ace king.
Hmm, okay.
So. He don't, he done for five.
It's not a donkey four bet.
Oh, you four bet. Which call?
Um, we don't have aces, we don't have queens, we don't really have twos. So we, this is like the only value hand we want to raise, we have a lot of draws, so I think we need to just call to protect our calling range.
You can call more when you have a spade or without a spade?
I think with, because, um, you have more protection.
How much, before we click, I was gonna say, how, how percentage of our range that continue that we have? How much do you think we, um, raise in position on the flop? Just curious, like, a percentage wise, what we think it is?
Five percent.
Good question.
Yeah, I thought it would have been less.
I don't even know what our range looks like.
No, that's crazy.
So it's nineteen percent raises. Like, it's good to think about it that way, because like, in my mind. I'm just happy, like, to always call with my good hands here, and it's not really. Uh, you've still gotta raise and bluff and. Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta find twenty percent raising, it's a lot. Okay.
Um, hold on, hold on, before I click anything, um. SPR is like two-thirds, so we have a one SPR. Do we ever want to check back with the spade here?
No, well. Five or sixty-five?
I don't think twenty-five makes sense. I don't think twenty five makes sense, but I think we're jamming or checking. I think like with ace, queen and diamonds, I'm always jamming, but I think this one I'm actually checking back a lot.
You don't think there's any small bets? Why is that?
The SPR is like two thirds. It's a sixty six percent pot sized jam.
Yeah, I'm with Nick. I think it's check or uh jam. I'd be interested to see how we break it down with the suits.
Thing is, if if we bet twenty five, okay, and he calls or does whatever, uh, it's like it creates like there's gonna be a hundred twenty five and we're gonna have twenty five behind, so it's there's no folding. Alright.
Yeah, what if you're bluffing?
Pouring fuel on the fire when we do that.
What if you're bluffing?
Uh, I wouldn't bluff with this size.
That then you you can't only have value.
The four bet pot, it's a four bet pot, so you can have value.
But we we are the caller in the four bet pot.
Yeah.
We have no jams here, that's crazy.
Yeah. Uh, the bluffs are going small as well.
What a weird spot. This is a really weird spot.
How about you sticking around uh versus the four bet with five, four suited, six, five suited, seven, six suited? I mean, I know we're supposed to, but.
It's always all in here.
And then you call a flat bet with those kind of, I guess they had backdoor flushes.
Nah.
And we lose. It's amazing.
Uh. You can three bet or call. I think this is a high frequency call.
See, I'm not out there doing that yet, but I will be shortly.
Not doing what?
The jack eights of the world.
Oh, yeah, it's good, especially this deep. Um, I like c betting. Maybe fifty percent, you can go small too, either one's fine.
Hmm, nice to size up.
Mostly fifty, yeah. Oh, I like going big again.
Eighty? Or fifty?
Yeah. Yeah, eighty. Just stacks too much equity.
We have a draw that struggle, I think so, is that it?
Do we though?
I think.
I'm fine just putting all the money in with this hand, I think.
A hundred bigs with this?
Yeah, we have a flush draw plus a straight draw. And if he ever is jamming other flush draws, then we have a jack or an eight. It's good.
Here we go for a bet, and then he goes all in. Or not calling with flush draws. What did we have here? Jack eight?
Jack, it's not in range though, cause we always check it.
There's a sliver actually. That's why I picked this.
Is there a sliver?
There is.
Oh, okay. Check nine. Back nine can't make a straight.
Oh. Hmm.
Oh, we have to bet.
All in?
No. We had ace, king, ace, jack, ace ten. What size will we pick? Probably like half pot. Half pot or? Yeah.
Thin waters.
Through that.
Yeah. Hmm.
Old.
Wow.
Brutal.
A machine. Oh.
Um, yeah, two words.
We're gonna call a four bet. Ooh.
I, uh.
Think so, right?
Yeah, we we have to call. I was gonna say, I wonder if it raised some.
We're getting milk.
God bless, probably just fold.
I feel them.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we have to call here, like without a heart. Yeah, alright, we start to let it go.
And you can do anything.
We can still win sometimes.
Uh.
I mean, that's technically true, but.
I think it might be a jam.
What?
Yeah. We actually don't really beat anything. Like what? Any anything that loses.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have good blockers for kings. Through that.
Every time. Every time, twenty percent of the time.
I just see about the small. Can I take it down with this garbage hand?
There's a flush draw. So maybe we size up?
If I had a spade, it maybe sizes up, but this is just garbage. I'm just trying to get auto folds. Wow, it checks seventy percent.
Takes a lot, right? Oh.
I'm just full. I think people over folding game, they're just small bets that are not gonna defend appropriately, so. You can call or three bet, either one's fine. We call or three bet. We three bet.
Three bet. That's so.
I think I size up. Yeah, I like fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good spot to check back. That ten is pretty good.
Sizes up for value still. I, uh.
Oh. Fed back. We call with queen, some jacks.
You bet so small, this is close. Yeah, it's probably a fold.
Spades no good, eight's no good. All in is good.
Tough game, yeah, I'm not jamming this one. You can find the ace queen jam, I'm not jamming this. I mean, it blocks queen ten and jack ten, and we'll have ace, king in range, so it makes sense.
Allow me to all some servers now.
We're blocking two pairs, we get single pair hands to fold. And we have the nuts in range.
That's insane.
Like, I bet he folds jack X here and some queen X.
That means calling me a fish again.
Yeah. Through that. Falling's fine too. In low, low two tone, we can bet small or large.
Plenty of sizing out there.
Check back. Ace of spades bad. Sizes up a lot, actually.
You're gonna blast on a seven. Maybe because the king eye board is really good for us.
Yeah, I don't like this with the ace of spades in my hand. Why are we blasting here?
I think range is double bowery. No? It's not. Forty percent check?
Look at the ace ten off suits, cause I'm like checking with the spades and blasting without it.
And wants to bet with spades or hearts, the ace. If you have the ace of spade, ace of hearts are good.
Alright, I mean, I guess your blocking continues. Like, he's gonna start folding pocket pairs and stuff. All or three bet. Even small, um, this hand might go large some too.
Um.
I think it's like sixty percent. Oh, wow, checks a sideboard with eights? No. I don't like this. Like, if you have king, sure, but eights, I'm always betting.
We're above the seven, we got value, man. We can capture.
Checking forty percent of the time on the ace sideboard in three bet pot, in possession. No, I don't.
Pretty weird, right?
I refuse to follow the machine.
Machine has something for the ace deuce and ace three boards.
Uh, let's check again. Uh, we have to call?
No.
Yeah.
Don't I call a nine or a seven before pocket eights, cause at least you'd be blocking something.
I'm calling.
Put him to the test every now and then.
This rip.
Let's, let's do that. Huh?
What?
Never, never, never.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's our mistake, what was it?
He folded a set of nines on there.
He revered a set of nines and then check uh overbet folded.
Uh, who?
Uh, this is mostly a fold.
This is most.
What? Oververse cutoff. Eyes up.
Yeah, definitely. Great car, right? Great, great car, eighty percent?
No.
Why not?
Hand struggles against a jam.
The king is as good as it gets for us.
Flush completes. I think we might have some small bets here, and like, I don't wanna size up with this hand, but I don't, I I can get behind a checker or bet small.
I'm betting fifty or seventy five.
If you have ace, king of diamonds, what size do you wanna bet?
Fifty.
Like, it's too big, yeah, bet small.
Yeah, okay. Non-size.
Like, ace king is kind of actually marginal on that board. Uh, you could be drawing dead.
Uh, mucho grande.
On this hand, can bet small or large? Either one's fine.
I don't think so. I think it's big or big.
Oh, we'll have better queens, so. I think we still go for value again.
It's one week. I would check here, I think. One week there, the pot is getting baby.
I'd go fifty or seventy five.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, now we just check back.
You sure?
Think, uh. It's thin, it might go for value, um.
Two ten.
Yeah. Mostly a call, you can three bet though.
Yeah.
This is a call, I think. Hmm. King ten of hearts, definitely a call. I think it's still a call. It's, oh, maybe in four bets. No, just call.
King seven, you format. In a four bet pot with this.
Uh, we really wanna check this back. We really wanna see a turn, I think. Like, if I had.
Hmm.
It isn't hate betting. Like, if I have diamonds or something, I'd rather bet. Like, what are we doing against a raise with this hand?
We call.
If he jams.
He can jam, it's PRs too big. So we went left, twenty five, right? Yeah. Hey, you can't jam.
He does some.
He can.
They're just like for the extremes, say he jams, what do you do? Then we can look at another size too.
Full, full free.
We're just calling off. Yeah, okay. If we're calling off, I I don't hate betting. It just sucks.
It's not great. Fifty. Or checks.
Um.
This is a spot to check.
I'm I'm betting like twenty five.
Twenty five is good.
Uh, jam?
All in.
If we wanna spade.
Calling is weird, no?
Yeah, it's really weird. That's really fucking weird. He could be bluffing ace eyes.
Yeah.
Through that.
Let's go with the tree.
Uh, check nine is a call. We better fold. It's fold.
Ace nine.
You can call or three bet. Pretty good flop. Uh, we'll actually have some big bets. I don't think we wanna do it with this hand though. Maybe, maybe it does. So vulnerable. Yeah, I like like fifty percent. Fifty seventy five.
Problem is, there's locked up equity here. So what we saying is that it bets small with locked up equity on the board.
I think it's more a forty big blind thing.
It's been that thing here as well.
Can we see the sim? In cash games, it's definitely, you have big betting still.
Pretty much just.
Oh, no big bets, okay.
I think maybe because cash games, the ranges are tighter, right?
Yeah. I don't think we re-raise actually. May, wait, what did we bet? Thirty three percent? Maybe we do. Problem is, like, if he jams. We have to call and it's kinda suck, so yeah, just call. I, uh, all. All. Yeah, cool. One game, mo- mostly a call, you can three bet. You bet small with range. Sizes up.
You have to call. Anybody?
Uh. It's out. Yeah. Mostly a call, you can three bet. Ooh, hold on, hold on, hold on. So Jack ten eight, this is one of the boards where we're gonna have absolute giant sizings.
So maybe um, pot or seventy five?
Maybe like a hundred fifty, like, what's, we go a hundred fifty?
Wait, is that right though? Cause I think it's um, I think it's Jack ten without the straight. On the board, like Jack ten, six.
Jack ten with a flush draw.
Let's see, open up the sim.
Cause this has locked up equity, so it's just small.
Or like medium, you have something like fifty and.
Yeah, locked up equity, small.
Yeah, okay. Cash games have ruined me.
Uh, but Louie, maybe go back to the flop report and see when we do use some really big sizings? I think it's gonna be like, like you said, Jack ten two tone and without a straight, like Jack ten six.
I think Jack ten seven, even this is what the two tone now. No, sort favor larger than that, like seventy five pot.
Yes.
The Jack tens were, I think, this one. Well. Yeah, we didn't look at the 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 report for a hundred big, I think.
Just sort by flops on the left side? And then go down to Jack ten? Those are all Jack jacks. Down a little bit more. There we go, Jack ten. Eight, Jack ten, eight, Jack ten, seven, you start, e- even Jack ten seven, you start having this uh polarizing size.
Actually, you know what? Jack ten nine, it's smaller check, Jack ten eight, smaller check. And Jack ten seven, when it starts to be the seven or a six. You start to use the fifty. So you need a Jack ten, seven, six, five. The more disconnected it is, the more you can size up. The more disconnected it is, the more you can size up. Yeah, we're gonna call. Just call.
Just call.
Wants to put it in.
I guess, yeah, not having a diamond.
What bluffs, what what are our bluffs there? Like queen, king?
Diamonds.
I think we want a bluff diamonds. Yeah, maybe you're right. Like, what do we jam with? Two pairs. All the nines are straights. What is a ace, king, ace, queen? Uh, there's. Ace queen just with anything. The ace queen is the bluff.
Alright. Well, that was a nice little session. Thanks a lot for coming, guys.